That's the gentleman right there.
That's why. All right, let's go ahead and get started, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence their phones and if you have any beepers to do so also. Good evening. This board is comprised of seven members. Four members of the board shall constitute a quorum and the affirmative vote of four members shall be necessary for the adoption of any motion. If only four members of the board are present, an applicant may request and be entitled to a continuance to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. If the matter is continued due to a lack of quorum, the chairperson or secretary of the board may set a special meeting to consider such matter. In the event that four votes are not obtained, an applicant, except in the case of a comprehensive plan amendment, may request a continuance or allow the application to proceed to the city commission without a recommendation. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2021-118, the City of Coral Gables has returned to traditional in-person meetings. However, the Planning and Zoning Board has established the ability for the public to provide comments virtually. For those members of the public who are appearing on Zoom and wish to testify, you must be visible to the court reporter to be sworn in. Otherwise, if you speak without being sworn in, your comments may not have evidentiary value. Lobbyist Registration and Disclosure. Any person who acts as a lobbyist must register with the city clerk as required pursuant to the city code. As Chair, I now officially call the City of Coral Gables Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of December 13th to order. The time is 6:03. Jill, please call the roll.
Robert Behar? He requested to be excused.
Yes.
Julio Gabriel?
Here.
Sue Kowalinski?
Here.
Felix Pardo?
Here.
Javier Salman?
Here.
Chip Withers?
Here.
AB Eisenstadt?
Here. And Robert Behar is out of town?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Notice Regarding Expartee Communications. Please be advised that this board is a quasi judicial board, which requires board members to disclose all expartee communications and site visits. An expartee communication is defined as any contact, communication, conversation, correspondence, memorandum, or other written or verbal communication that takes place outside a public hearing between a member of the public and a member of a quasi judicial board regarding matters to be heard by the board. If anyone made any contact with a board member regarding an issue before the board, the board member must state on the record the existence of the expartee communication and the party who originated the communication. Also, if a board member conducted a site visit specifically related to the case before the board, the board member must also disclose such site visit. In either case, the board member must state on the record whether the expartee communication and/or site visit will affect the board member's ability to impartially consider the evidence to be presented regarding the matter. The board member should also state that his or her decision will be based on substantial competent evidence and testimony presented on the record today. Does any member of the board have such communication and/or site visit to disclose at this time?
No.
No.
No? Swearing In. Everyone who speaks this evening must complete the roster on the podium. We ask that you print clearly so the official records of your name and address will be correct. Now, with the exception of attorneys, all persons physically in the city commission chambers who will speak on agenda items before us this evening, please rise to be sworn in. Would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you will provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Thank you. Zoom Platform Participants. I will ask any person wishing to speak on tonight's agenda item to please open their chat and send a direct message to Jill Menendez stating you would like to speak before the board and include your full name. Jill will call you when it's your turn. I ask you to be concise for the interest of time. Phone Platform Participants. After the Zoom Platform participants are done, I will ask phone participants to comment on tonight's agenda item. I also ask you to be concise for the interest of time. We have the approval of the minutes of November 8th, 2023. Has everybody had a chance to review? And if so, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Any comments? No? Call the roll, please.
Sue Kowalinski?
Yes.
Felix Pardo?
Yes.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes. The procedure that we'll use tonight. First, we'll have the identification of the agenda item by Mr. Caller. Then we'll have the presentation by the applicant or agent. It'll follow by the presentation of staff. We'll go ahead and have public comment first in chamber, then Zoom platform, then phone line platform. Afterwards, we'll close the public comment. We'll have further board discussion and a motion. And further discussion, second of motion if needed, and then the board's final comments and a vote. Mr. Caller?
Mr. Chairman, we have one property, but is composed of six items. I recommend that we, that I read all the items in, that we have one hearing, as we typically do, and then we have six separate votes on, on the items. So I'm going to read one through six so everybody can sit back and relax while I go through this agenda.
Since we only have one item, I think Mr. Salman would like to make a comment?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to state to the record, full transparency, that this particular project is...
Is the light on?
Push the button down.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just want to take this opportunity because this is a small town and it turns out that this particular applicant, the attorney, and I share a client. And I just wanted to make that clear. I've checked with the city attorney and, and you want to say something now?
Yes, well, first of all, just to clarify, you're not related to the applicant. It's the applicant's attorney that you happen to share a specific client, but you're not, as you've explained to me, you're not in business with the attorney.
That is correct.
So I've reviewed this. I've also double-checked with the city attorney. We, we don't see this as a conflict. My only question to you, because this is a quasi judicial matter and you have some knowledge of this attorney, can you be fair on this particular matter?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Then you certainly can proceed to hear, hear this case.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Please proceed.
Item E1. In ordinance to the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, amending the future land use map of the City of Coral Gables Comprehensive Plan pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-213, Comprehensive Plan and Text and Map Amendments and Small-Scale Amendment Procedures, Section 163.3187 Florida statutes, from commercial low-rise intensity to commercial high-rise intensity for lots 8 through 21 less the one-half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Section, together with that portion of the 20-foot platted alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of said block 29, 3,000 Ponstaleon Boulevard, 216 and 224 Catalonia and 203 University Drive and 225 Malaga, Coral Gables, Florida, providing repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item E2, and I'm going to be reading this legal description, but I'm going to eliminate reading the street addresses since it, it's virtually, it's the same location. In ordinance to the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, making zoning district boundary changes pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-212, zoning code text and map amendments for lots 8 through 21 less the west one-half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Section, from mixed-use 1 MX1 District to MX2, mixed-use 3 MX3 District, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item E3. In ordinance to the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, providing for the vacation of a public alleyway, alley, excuse me, alleyway pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-211, abandonment and vacations in the city code Chapter 62, Article 8, vacation, abandonment, and closure of streets, easements, and alleys by private owners in the city. Application process, providing for the vacation of the 20-foot wide alley, which is approximately 155 feet in length, lying between lots 12 through 18 and lots 11 and 19 and Block 29, Craft Section, Coral Gables, Florida, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item E4. A resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, providing receipt of transfer of development rights, TDRs, pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-204.6, review and approval of use of TDRs on receivers' sites for the receipt and use of TDRs for a mixed-use project referred to as Ponce Park residences on the property legally described as lots 8 through 21 less the west one-half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Section, together with that portion of the 20-foot platted alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of said block 29 of Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item E5. A resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, approving mixed-use site plan and encroachment review pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-203, conditional uses for proposed mixed-use project referred to as Ponce Park residences on property legally described as lots 8 through 21 less the west one-half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Sections, together with that portion of the 20-foot alley, platted alley lying, excuse me, platted alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of said block 29, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provisions, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Last item. Item E6. A resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida, providing for the tenant platent title Ponce Park residences pursuant to zoning code Article 14 Process, Section 14-210, plating slash subdivision being a replat of legal, of 42,543 square feet, .977 acres into a single tract of land on the property legally described as lots 8 through 21 less the one, less the west one-half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Section, together with that portion of the 20-foot platted alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of said block 29, together with a 1,318 square feet portion of University Drive that runs north of Malaga Avenue right-of-way and west of the Ponstaleon Boulevard right-of-way, in dedication of 1,725 feet of Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provision, severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Items E1, E2, E3, E4, E5, and E6, public hearing.
Thank you. We have two emails that we have received. I'd like to ask the secretary that they be entered into the record, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, Chip?
Yeah, I, I guess this is the third time we've seen this property, some of us, and usually it's, it's a packed house. And so I was just curious to why the, the seats weren't filled and it seems that there were quite a few, and I guess city clerk can tell us some, about the return notices? And I wanted to make sure the city was aware of that and we were okay to proceed with, it looks to be a voluminous amount, a lot more than I've ever seen.
Well, first of all, I believe that the radius here was 1,500 feet. So I'm sure there were a substantial number of notices. Secondly, the only requirement is the notice be sent in accordance with that list of the, those addresses on record in the property appraiser's office. So if there are addresses that have been returned, it's unclear why those addresses were returned, but as long as they utilize the property appraisers' list of addresses, the fact that some were returned doesn't create an issue for having this hearing. And I spoke with Jennifer and she receives stacks of addresses returned for various reasons. And so while it seems like a lot, I don't think it's unusual for the number of notices that were sent. You might want to ask the applicant's representative if, in fact, they did use the property appraiser's address, just to confirm on the record that, in fact, he did. And you may want to ask, and I'm not sure whether the city planner knows how many actual notices were mailed, or whether the applicant knows how many mailed addresses were received.
Okay, and again, I just want to make sure that we don't go down hours of this and then come back to, these are, these are the ones that were returned.
Right. So for the record, you're, you're holding a stack of envelopes that I would say are about six to eight inches thick.
Well...
If that's, if that's a fair, but you've shown it. So, so maybe we can get some indication of the number of notices that were sent and confirmation that they, they utilized the requirement that under the code, under Section C1, that, that it was the property appraisers' list.
Mr. Chair, good evening. For the record, members of the board, Javier Fernandez with the offices at, we just changed addresses, 201 Alhambra Circle, Suite 950. Good evening. For the record, we did follow the procedure specified in the code. We provided the required certifications, which are par the record. I believe approximately 450 notices were sent out. I will confirm that number shortly as I have it on my hard drive. We use a third-party mail service, which is customary for this process, to ensure the accuracy, and it was a 1,500-foot radius distribution that was executed.
Here's my concern. And again, I just don't want the city to, to get into trouble on this.
Sure.
There's over, I don't know, there's probably well over half of the 450 there, and they all have the same response, unable to deliver insufficient address. Every one of them is the same. So it says current resident. I know some are apartments with no apartment numbers. So, you know, I'm just, just want to make sure that we've had proper notice and there's, we don't have a lawsuit down the road for improper notice.
Just to, if I could just correct a numerical reference to the record, it was 1,223 notices that were sent.
Okay, not 450, okay.
Not 450, I apologize for that error.
I was really worried.
So substantially more than what's in that stack and, and happy to answer any further questions you have on the subject. questions you have on the subject.
So do you, is it normal, I guess, for the city, do we usually put current resident, or do we put a name on notices? Because if I get current resident at this time of year, it usually goes in the trashcan.
So the property owner, Jennifer Garcia, City Planner, the property owner has the name, because we have access to that name in the property appraiser's website. So the property owner will receive it with their name, and they'll recognize it, and hopefully they'll open it and look at it and read at it, and hopefully they'll attend.
So those are the current resident?
But current occupant, I think it's, or current occupant, so it includes both commercial properties and residential property, we don't have access to those tenant names, so we say current occupant. As you remember, I'm sure someone, I'm not sure, no, I think you were on the board, there was a recent text amendment within the last year, I want to say, that we required not only just the property owner, but also to the current building.
Okay, so listen, as long as we get a green light from the city and the board's okay with it, I just wanted to make sure we were doing it correctly.
Would it, would it be a question of that some of the addresses just didn't have an apartment number? In other words, if there's several or quite a few that are to a specific building?
I, I couldn't answer without looking at the notices, sir, quite honestly. I'm happy to take a look at them and address it. Again, we, all I can represent to this board is that we adhere to the procedure, we contact with third parties to produce the list using publicly available information, and notices set. We did have a community meeting, of which there were a number of detractors to the prior proposals present. They were pleased with this iteration, I was going to get into that with, in later in the presentation. So I believe, while there are probably still some folks who are opposed to the proposal, no doubt, we have tried over the last 15 months to make substantial progress in conversation with neighbors to try to address concerns.
Can you answer the question about, is this typical? Absolutely. We usually get a big stack full. Unfortunately, I think for a recent notice, I have probably a stack of this many for a couple, I think, two or three millions that we did. So it's very typical that we receive those envelopes back. And I can't explain why, I'm not the mail service.
Thank you. I mean, we've brought it up before the city, and if the city is satisfied, let's go. If the applicant could please come up and make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, good evening. For the record, one more time, Javier Fernandez with offices at 201 Alhambra Circle, Suite 1205. We just moved, hence the confusion, I apologize. I'm joined this evening by the principal or president of the Almores Companies and manager for RC Acquisitions, one of the applicants, Spencer Morris, Derek Cardenas, our development manager, Amanda Brown, our development associate, the architect of record for this new incarnation of the project, who is John Cunningham, who also designed 121 Alhambra Plaza for the Almores Companies in the past. We are pleased to be here this evening. As you know, this project has had a difficult prior history, and we've worked very hard over the last 15 months to try to address a series of concerns and comments, starting with a complete reboot on the design, number one, of the project, working with neighbors who previously expressed objections, not only to the architecture, but some of the organizational elements of the project as well. So I'll try to be very brief, and just, we'll take in large measure your questions, and happy to then reserve some time for rebuttal to address any comments that may come to the fore. You all are very familiar with the site. As you know, it is comprised of six folios, just under an acre in size, bounded on the north by Catalonia Avenue, on the east by Ponce de Leon Boulevard, on the south and east by University Drive and Malaga Avenues. The property presently was acquired in parts in 2011 through 2018, put into this assemblage, and the entitlement process began shortly thereafter. So this project does have for the company quite a long history. As I mentioned, it's comprised of six folios, including a 20-foot, a 20-foot wide alley, which is one of the items before you for possible vacation totaling 1,318 square feet. The property currently, as you can see, has a context where to the east across Ponce de Leon Boulevard, you've got the plaza, to the south, the Coral Gables District Court, to the north, a four or five-story office building, and to the west, an eight-story office building immediately abutting it. The site currently, as mentioned, has a commercial low-rise intensity, future land use designation, and a zoning designation of mixed-use District 1. We are obviously asking to change that. I wanted to kind of briefly recap how we got here today. After an extensive process culminating in a meeting before the City Commission on July 22nd, July 27th of 2022, internally, we decided to revisit the team and begin a design reset, which began in earnest after we interviewed a series of architects in September of 2022. That resulted in the hire of Mr. John Cunningham, with whom we'd had some success previously on the design and development of 121 Alhambra. And then we then began a conversational process with some folks who were detractors of the prior project, to see how we could possibly revisit the project and hopefully win support for a reconceptualized design. We took from September to May of 2023 to study the site again, revise the architecture, engage in communication, revised the design numerous times. That culminated in a conceptual review before the Board of Architects on June 29th of 2023. We did get very positive feedback from the board at that time. We went to the development recommitting the interim on June 30th and received staff's comments, and then came back to the Board of Architects formally on August 17th of 2023 for a review, at which time we were lucky to receive the board's unanimous approval. And we are here before you today, and hope we'll, hopefully we'll continue on to the Historic Preservation Board and City Commission for our final hearings on the subject applications. So with that, by way of background, I just wanted to make, highlight what I think are probably the two most salient comparisons outside of the architecture, which Mr. Cunningham can get into in addressing your questions in the future. The prior proposals ranged in height from 12 to 16 stories, 149 feet to 179 feet, 80 to 161 for rent apartments. The current proposal was very different, not only in terms of its architecture, but also its scale. It's nine stories, 115 feet, eight inches to the rooftop, only 57 condominiums. These are large format condominiums, as you will learn, with an average size in excess of 2,400 square feet. Essentially, they are homes, without, a single-family homes without a yard, with, but with all the amenities one would want in a modern condominium building. We have six requests, item seven on my list, I just broke it out because it is a new element to the application. It is an encroachment for porcaccio, which we will describe later, but the requests are essentially the same as the prior submittals. Again, the architecture and some of the elements of the project being slightly different. We have a request for a future land use amendment to change the designation from commercial low-rise intensity to commercial high-rise intensity. The substantial difference between the two categories being the maximum height that's allowed under that category, the intensity and density remains unchanged. The request is noted in your staff report and on the slide, is consistent with a number of comp plan goals, objectives, and policies. I've highlighted here, just for a quick, quick overview, a number of those, or four of those. And the request is also consistent with the neighboring designations for many of the properties along Ponce de Leon Boulevard. To our south, again, the portion of the property comprising the Coral Gables District Courthouse has a commercial high-rise designation as well. And you'll see that to our east and places further north along Ponce de Leon Boulevard, that is not an atypical designation for properties on the Boulevard. The next request is a rezoning from MX1 to MX3. That rezoning, again, is very similar in terms of the designations to our south, east, and parcels further north along Biscayne, I'm sorry, not Biscayne Boulevard, Ponce de Leon Boulevard, my apologies. The, the, that request, again, is consistent with a comprehensive plan. Again, the reason for the change is be able to access more height, in this case, up to 115 feet, eight inches, so we can provide condominium units that would meet the market demand with the requisite floor-to-ceiling heights. We've worked very hard with the neighbors to try to bring that envelope down as much as possible. Ultimately, we ended up here because of those necessities. Our next request is for a conditional use approval for the site plan that also includes item seven on my list, which is the encroachment for the porcaccio, which I will address separately. The request meets all of the requirements or conditions or criteria for conditional use approval under your code. And I'll quickly just run through the program and give you a sense of the architecture that Mr. Cunningham can elaborate on if you have any further questions. This side provides you a sense of the ground floor condition. You'll see that we have a paseo that dominates a substantial portion of the ground floor that is abutted on both sides by retail. And at the center, lobby areas that provide access to the elevator cores that would service the units up above, as well as the mezzanine level. The intention here is to make sure that that paseo, in contradistinction to many others across the city, is a very active and engaging space, activated by the retail, activated by the lobby uses for the rest of portions of the building. Garage access is from the north on Catalonia Avenue. We have a, a location for vehicular arrival on the north end of the site, at the terminus of the paseo that can be used for rideshare hailing when people arrive, not blocking the travel lane, and for valet parking to support the retail and also the residential use. On the south, the tower element is really buttressed by the colonnade. You'll see that in the architectural renderings in a minute. That is, will make for, I think, we think, a very dramatic outdoor seating space for what we hope will be F and B uses on the ground floor, and provide a marked entryway into the paseo. We'll move on to the mezzanine level very quickly, just to show that we have amenities on that floor, as well as some retail. You'll see at the center of the core, from, from the paseo, you can access that retail through two staircases that provide another point of interaction and activity to, back to the ground floor. I'm going to highlight a couple of the floor plans, because some of them are a little bit repetitive, but you'll see here at level three, we do have a mix of uses, smallest uses being one-bedroom units that are very large, as well as a number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units throughout the floor plan. You'll see that the building is basically, has an atrium at the center. That atrium was designed to allow light to penetrate the paseo, which is a unique feature of this building, again, in contrast to some others that have paseos in the city. You'll see that at this level, we begin to incorporate multi-story units. That was done intentionally because we wanted to break up the monotony of the facade. That had been one of the complaints about the prior architecture, it was too monolithic along University Drive. This allowed Mr. Cunningham use this, this technique to create a sense of movement, as well as a number of vertical breaks and setbacks that you'll see, and he can describe in response to any questions you have as well. You'll see as you move up in the floors, there are more multi-level units in floors six and seven, and eight and nine, and we do have at the center of the tower element, three-bedroom units that basically then become the only other unit on those levels. Moving to the roof very quickly, this gives you a sense of the outdoor program. It's amenity space exclusively for the 57 residential units. We have a cabana that is the terminus of the tower element. It's an outdoor space. To the southwest, you have an area that would be for grilling. To the northeast, you have cold and hot plunge pools, as well as a small pool. And then along the northern element, you have a traditional pool, that would kind of round out that amenity deck. We incorporated this slide to kind of give you a sense of the comparison of the height in relative to other buildings in the area. Again, the building immediately to our west is eight stories, we're at nine, floor plates, floor-to-ceiling heights are higher, which explains that height differential. We did not include in this illustration, again, the tower element, which is higher than the 115 eight floor-to-floor. This gives you a sense of the cross-section and circulation of the building, looking east, and you can see how the uses are distributed across the floor, floor plans on each level. I wanted to share this slide out of the architectural set, because if you've walked through some paseos in buildings across Coral Gables, some of them are not terribly exciting. They're just kind of blank corridors to get you from one place to the other. As you'll see throughout the development of our plan, a lot of thought has been given to creating kind of tactile auditory moments of engagement, and we've done that here through the uses and circulation of the building. So you can see on the south end of the paseo, starting with the colonnade, you've got this outdoor seating area potentially that should animate that space and give it some life. As you move through the pedestrian corridor, you will see that the lobbies serve to create points of intimacy, there's a muse looking up to an amenity deck on the second floor, and then you've got the staircases that connect to the circulation at that level, at the mezzanine level as well. As you then exit on the north end, you'll see that you terminate in another retail use there as well. So the idea is to engage the pedestrian to make it feel like a safe and inviting space so they can traverse the site north to south. We think it's a marked distinction in contrast to the current alley condition that's there today. This will give you just a quick peek into the roof plan. As you'll see at the center of the paseo, it will be covered, but it will be glass that will allow light to penetrate down to the ground floor, which, again, we think will make the space more inviting for pedestrians to use. This gives you a sense of the landscaping, which will use specimen trees, not only in the park aspect to the south and east of the site, but also along the right-of-way. Again, water features and landscaping are being used to create both an inviting aesthetic environment, but also create some auditory connections for pedestrians traversing or are bisecting the site. These are just renderings, one image at night, there was, have been concerns about lighting of buildings, we wanted to give you a sense of what the context would be. We're trying to be respectful of the neighboring uses, we are not too far away from residential, so we did not want to have an overpowering lighting program for the building. This gives you a sense of you looking back towards Ponce Circle Park. You'll see that the proposed landscape amenities will actually create a nexus, pedestrian nexus from this site to Ponce Circle Park. You see the relationship between our proposed building and the existing buildings to our east. Another rendering with a northern perspective, again, from the southeast, looking north, northwest. This gives you a sense of the movement of the facade of the building. You'll see the variations in terms of setbacks. The Board of Architects was very happy with the treatment of what had been a very uniform edge before. Credit Mr. Cunningham for coming up with a design. And here is really a section that we're excited about, which is the northeast corner of the building, which at the ground floor will have, we think, a very inviting, you see at the bottom of that illustration, F and B space, that could be an activity room for, for gatherings. And then this tower element here on the west, on the northeast, that we think would give the building, gives the building a very nice, a very nice and elegant treatment at that corner. And then this is the northern elevation, as you can see, we have loading on the south of Malaga, we do have a utility room here on the northwest corner, the parking garage entrance, and you can see further down, as you get to the middle of the building, the terminus of the paseo and the porcaccio that we are hoping to incorporate as part of the building as well. You know, one of the things that we are excited about, and one of the things that we learned from our conversations, is that the public, at least the public we spoke to, is very concerned about keeping and preserving the slip lane. We wanted to make that a location for enhanced pedestrian safety, we also wanted to create a signature public space. This illustration, this rendering, gives you a sense of what we're trying to accomplish. It will be a raised table. As you get to the center, we've incorporated striping to make it clear that it is a pedestrian crossing, but the idea here is to, is to really make this a public space that would, that will, you know, I think certainly serve to anchor this site as a pivotal gateway into the central business district, which we think it is. This image gives you a sense of the paseo that we're trying to create, as you can see on both sides, we're hoping to activate it with some outdoor seating. You can see at the center of this image, the glass roof that will allow for light to penetrate down to the ground floor, and then obviously the terminus and the northern terminus at the other end. This is an evening image at the edge, the southeast edge of the building here as well. So again, we think that this site plan, which is comprised of 172,000 square feet of program, 57 dwelling units, just slightly more than 20,000 square feet of retail, supported by 204 below-grade spaces, and the requisite back-of-house and amenity spaces, is a markedly improved program from the one that we had proffered before, and we're excited and look forward to the opportunity to hopefully develop it in the future. In addition to the actual program, we are creating 22,000, just slightly in excess of 22,000 square feet of landscaped open space, 17,202 of which will be public realm improvements. We're expecting to spend $2 million on those enhancements, and we also have committed to make, we are willing to make another $1 million of improvements. Your staff report references University Drive. One of the things we'll talk about at the end of the presentation, hopefully, is that the public has asked us to consider possibly investing that money, or a combination of that money, in a dog park, public realm improvements along Ponce de Leon Boulevard, south of University Drive, and/or contribute that money to support the renovations to Ponce Circle Park, including the incorporation of a bench hall, apparently that's been discussed. So we'll, we'll have some more conversation about that at the close. The next request is for the approval of a tentative plat. Again, the, the property's comprised of multiple platted lots, we want to unify them into a single tract, it's a very straightforward request, in order to execute this, these improvements. The next is the abandonment of the 20-foot wide alleyway, which totals 1,318. The next is the abandonment of the 20-foot wide alleyway, which totals 1,318 feet. I wanted to share with you this particular image because the pink area is the footprint of the existing alleyway. The green area, which incorporates the pink area, is the footprint of the paseo. And so what we are doing while we are vacating that space, which has been used for pedestrian connectivity and probably not the most hospitable and aesthetically pleasing area to walk across, we're replacing what we think is a markedly enhanced pedestrian circulation area that we think will actually result in more people traversing the site than they do today. And again, we would just note for the record, we agree with staff's findings that the requested vacation meets all of the criteria in your code. Again, the vacation will result in the 1,318-foot alley basically being removed. Along the southern and southeastern portions of the site, we are rededicating back to the city to make, create some uniformity on that edge, 1,725 square feet back to the city for, to enhance the public realm, consistent with the illustrations we've shown you before. Moving on quickly, the program, the program anticipates the use of 23,455 square feet of TDRs. That will not result in an increase in the size or number of units of the building. It does add to the total square footage, and we are within the permissible, bonusable FAR limits under your code. Those were TDRs that were procured pursuant to a settlement agreement or acquired via settlement agreement, and we will be proceeding to the Historic Preservation Board and ultimately City Commission for the approval of the use of those TDRs as well. Lastly, I just wanted to highlight an element of the site plan approval specifically, which is the porcasera encroachment. Again, we are very concerned about the pedestrian experience and creating a sense of arrival, and that sense of arrival is intended to also consider the possibility of people arriving when they're adverse weather, weather conditions. And so, well, we would have liked to have a slightly more extensive encroachment into the lay-by that we're creating. These illustrations do show, one, the design of the, of the porcasera, what we are intending to build here by way of the aesthetic, and also in the bottom right-hand corner, the dimension of the encroachment. What this will allow us to do is provide for the passenger exiting or accessing a vehicle in the lay-by to do that under a covered roof so as to limit their likelihood of getting wet in the event of rain. It would not allow us to get coverage for the driver. We would anticipate doing that if there is someone who are returning a car to via valet with the use of a valet-assisted umbrella to provide them some protection from the elements. We think this is a really important feature to make sure that when people are waiting for either the ride share to arrive, a ride share, a ride share car, or the vehicle to be returned, that they have some modicum, some modicum of protection from the elements as they're, as they're waiting for the vehicle at this location. And with that, that is, and sub and substance, our proposal. Hopefully, we've been brief, our presentation. Happy to take any questions. The board has at this time. Our entire team here is available for questions. If not, we will close and just reserve a few minutes for rebuttal if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and have the city make their presentation, then we'll circle back if there's any questions.
Jennifer Garcia, city planner. Can I have the PowerPoint, please? Thank you. So as we know, this has numerous requests. The location, as we talked about, is on University and Ponce between Malaga and Catalonia. This is a view of the site. You're missing the plaza development in the foreground. It's 190 feet and six inches. This is showing there's two parcels, the far east parcel with an alley in the middle of 3,002 square feet, and the west parcel, which is past that. So you can see the existing locate, the existing conditions of the neighborhood, which is the building to the north, which is commonly known as the Zubi Building, is at 72 feet. The building that's fronting Ponce Circle Park is 186 feet. And interestingly enough, the property to the direct west, it's a budding, it's at 91 feet, even though its zone MX1 has a low-rise commercial designation. So there are six requests, and I'll go through each one of these very briefly. The current land use designation is commercial low-rise intensity, and they're proposing to change the designation to be commercial high-rise intensity. Again, this isn't, doesn't change FAR. FAR remains the same as 3.5 FAR or 4.375 FAR with TDRs. This is not changing the density. The density is at 125 units an acre. It's only changing the maximum height. So the zoning request, the zoning map request is changing it from MX1 to MX3. And again, that's not changing the intensity. The intensity of FAR remains the same as the density does remains the same. This is simply about adding more height to the property. The vacation is the current alley that's in the middle of 1,318 square feet. Is that correct? I will verify that in a second. But a 20-foot alley that, that is currently between the east and the west parcel. And the TDRs, as he described, they're requesting to receive 23,455 square feet of TDRs, and that will be a maximum of 4.0 FAR. The maximum they can have is 4.375 FAR, so they're below that maximum. So the ground floor site plan, you can see the vehicular entrance and exit off of Catalonia to the north. The ground floor retail circulates around the building to the north, to the east, and to the south as well. There's a significant paseo that cuts through the middle of the property. There's a loggia that's fronting to the east, southeast of the property, and the loading is off of University Drive. So the mixed-use site plan, this is also in your staff reports, you may be able to read it, but the highlights are that, again, the FAR is 4.05 FAR, which the max is 4.375. The maximum height that they're proposing is 115 feet and eight inches plus a 20-foot-high pool cabana that's on the rooftop right there. The stories is nine stories. They're proposing to have 57 residential units and open space around 22,000 square feet on the private property as well as public property as well. And then their last request, the ten of plats. So they'll incorporate the private property, obviously, the vacated alley, and change the curve slightly to bulb it out, sorry, to bulb it in on the east side and bulb it out on the south side. Roughly, I think, 300 and some change square footage will go back to the public right-of-way. So this has gone through the typical review process at DRC, went in June of this year. Board of Architects a couple of times received approval back in September. They had a neighborhood meeting in October, and here we are with planning and zoning board. They'll be going to historic probably in January, but we'll see what time their staff scheduled it, at which time, when they have approval for the TDRs and the change of the historic city plan, then they'll be scheduled for a city commission. The letters went to both property owners and current occupants of properties within 1,500 square feet, sorry, 1,500-foot radius of the property. And those went out twice, neighborhood meeting and today's meeting for the planning and zoning board. The property was posted three times for DRC, BOA, and today's meeting. The website was posted three times, and there's been a news advertisement once. So staff determines it's consistent with the comp plan goals, objectives, and policies. Recommend approval with conditions as it complies with the fines of fact that's outlined into your staff report. And I'll go through, the conditions are listed in your staff report at the very end, but I'll do some highlights. Staff's recommending a move of the slip lane in accordance with Public Works. Inclusion of on-street parking on Ponce and Malaga, which is the south streets. Any signal adjustments that that might require, as well as landscape improvements to, you know, to make it look nice. There's a revision of the public plaza to include that elimination of the slip lane to prioritize pedestrian movement for the east and south, as well as east, south, north and south and east and west, to maintain the public plaza and any improvements so the city wouldn't be maintaining it, the applicant would. And the applicant would contribute $1 million towards public realm improvements. And then to maintain pedestrian access during construction on Ponce de Leon. And that's it.
Thank you. Jennifer, just, just a quick question. Did we ever look at the alley and approve this alley previously? I know we turned down, or is this not the project? There was one project that we had approved, vacating of an alley, but not the project.
We vacated an alley, but we improved it?
But the project was denied. It was not this project. When it came before us in the past.
It was recently or?
No, the same project. When it came before, when it came before.
Last year.
For some reason in my mind, I, I think that we had approved, the board had approved the vacating of the alley, but not the project itself.
I think we outlined that in the beginning of the staff report. Let me double check.
Go ahead, please.
Sir Chair, pardon the interruption again for the record, Javier Fernandez. I believe that's correct. The, the vacation was approved. The project was recommended for denial, I think, at that time.
So you're, why are you coming back for the vacating of the alley if it was approved? Because the project is completely different, so you have to come back?
That's my understanding, sir. Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear as to why.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that approval for that alleyway didn't go through the commission through the entire process. They came back with a new project.
Understood. I just wanted to confirm because I remember.
Yes, correct.
My thought is to open it up for public comment unless somebody has a dire need that they need to ask the applicant a question, if everybody's okay with that.
The only thing is, I have many questions for staff.
Right, we will, we will, for the staff and the applicant. Let's go ahead and open it for public comment first. Jennifer, I mean, Jill, how many do we have?
So we have two that have signed up, and the.
And in Zoom?
No one on Zoom has indicated they want to speak.
Okay, let's go ahead and call who you have signed up here first.
Sarah Conde. You need to sign answer.
Again, if anybody came in late, if they would like to speak before this item, I ask that you please go to the podium and register with Jill.
I'm Sarah Conde. I'm from 228 Alacio. My comment on this project is that, yeah, it's been here, this is the third time. You know, they've come down with the height on the actual project itself. This place was filled because the neighbors were very upset about the scale of the project. You know, mostly they feared it would be a lot like the, the plaza, which everyone dislikes, everyone in the neighborhood, something of that scale. It really destroys a home neighborhood that we all bought into. So, so this project has come down and down and down. My only comment is that, at the end of the day, it's just large enough to get to MX3. All right, it's a little bit higher than MX2. They slipped right into MX3. If you allow this to go to MX3, that opens it up to the 190 feet. It'll be 190 feet forever. They will never go back on that, number one. Number two, it's the precedent. Already they're saying, well, the plaza is MX3. That's the precedent. We should be MX3. All right, if they become MX3, every other prod, every other lot is going to request MX3, and that's going to completely destroy our area. You know, I'm for people making profit, but they paid an MX1 price for the land. They're asking for an alley. You know, I, I just feel MX3 is too much. I think allowing for 190 feet, I know that they have not, their project does not present 190 feet, but if you pass MX3, you're allowing 190 feet, and that'll be the domino effect for every other property. And you're already seeing it now. They're saying the plaza is the precedent for them to get the MX3. I ask you not to approve changing to MX3. It's 190 feet. It's too high for a property that borders the neighborhood. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I've lived at, excuse me, 228 Alacio for the last 23 years, homeowner. I have a couple of questions, I guess. How long has it been since the master plan for zoning was approved? My understanding is like, what, three years at the most? Is that correct?
I would defer that to staff, but what, Jennifer, when was the master plan approved for zoning?
The master plan for zoning?
Wasn't there a new plan for zoning the, the whole central area?
No, he, he asked, when was the comprehensive land use plan changed last?
That's not what I understood.
I believe it was in 2009, did that sound?
Because he said master plan.
That's, that's not what he asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he said.
Wasn't there a new plan for zoning passed within the last three or four years at the most?
So the zoning code was updated.
What?
Updated. The zoning code text.
Zoning code was updated.
Right.
All right, and it gave this land MX1, as I understand it, because the theory was we were going to slope downward from the center of the city where the tall buildings would be to neighborhoods. I was, I was struck, for example, by the northeast view of this project. Do you remember that one? You saw the side of the, of the new building, and what'd you see stretching from there to Bird Road? One-story greenery, right? Single-family houses primarily, right? Across the street from this project, that's where the one-story buildings, one-story houses like my own start, right? So it's, the, the plan for tapering off from the high-rises to lower elevations is already out the window from what, three years ago? They're going from MX1 to MX3, right? As the previous speaker said, 115 feet, which is the proposal, is just the lowest, just above the MX3 level, right? Now, I, I was impressed by the look of the building, right? I think that would be a great building in downtown. I don't see it on the edge of downtown. I don't see it across the street from one-story residences like mine, right? I have another question, I guess. What happens if this project is given MX3 and they decide not to go through with it? Something, you know, recession hits, right? This project gets abandoned. They sell the land. They sell the land to somebody, and now it's MX3, and then go to 190 feet. Is that correct?
Well, what I'd like to ask you to do is just make your comments to the board. Afterwards, we can go ahead and answer those questions for you, or we can put you in touch with Jill. But my understanding is they'd have to come back before a site plan review again.
But they will have MX3 zoning, and their argument will be, it's zoned for 190. Why are you trying to deny us our right to have 190, right?
Continue, please.
Okay, that, that's my main concern, I think, right? In addition to, well, what I've said before, it seems to me that's a problem, and we know that there's going to be lots of profit to be made if that land can be used for 190 feet rather than for 115. I have another question. I hope it's in order, and that is, is it possible to grant 115 feet plus the, what is it, 20 or 25-foot canopy or whatever, right? Is it possible to grant authority for that without giving them MX3? Do you have to give them MX3 zoning to allow them to go ahead with 115 feet? Because it seems to me that's dangerous. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. This project may never go through, and I'm worried that we're going to have another Las Vegas extravaganza like the one across the street if we give that MX3 zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers in chamber?
Yes, yes, we do. Lino Fernandez.
Good evening, board. My name's Lino Fernandez. I live at 415 Cadima. Against this project, I think it's a very good-looking project, very nice, like was mentioned earlier, maybe downtown Miami or just somewhere else. The, I drive that area a lot. When they built the plaza, total chaos. I don't know how many of you board members drive that area, but you should have in your emails some pictures of what traffic looked like this same time yesterday. It wasn't staged. It was just, hey, what's going on here? There's a construction sign on that Google Maps, that construction sign or road closed sign is non-existent. I don't know why it's there. I was there yesterday. There is no road closures. I was there again today. There's no road closures. Adding this project to that area is going to make traffic that much worse. Taking the slip onto university, I think that's crazy. I don't know who does traffic studies or traffic controls, but that is chaos to allow that project to be built at that location. Thank you. but that is chaos to allow that project to be built at that location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Jill, anybody else in chambers?
No.
What about on Zoom?
Uh, no, no one's indicated they want to speak.
Nobody on Zoom and phone platform?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and close it for public comment. Uh, the applicant, sir, you wanted to come up and make your rebuttal?
Just, just very briefly, it's actually a couple of points of agreement with some of the comments that were made. Number one is, on the traffic, we agree. Uh, one of the, one of the conditions I want to highlight would be a modification. So I believe it's condition four B Roman at three, uh, which would require the removal of the slip lane. You know, we, we went down that road. We understand the concerns of the neighbors. We've heard them loud and clear. It's been retained as part of our design. We'd like the option to retain it, or at least present it to the city commission as we have submitted it to, to staff. Uh, that would be request number one. Uh, the second request would be with respect to the, uh, condition related to the public improvements. Again, we'd like a little bit more flexibility to respond to the public's requests in terms of public enhancements. Uh, the condition reads as a limitation for the use of the million dollars just for improvements to University Drive from Ponce to Lejeune. We would like it also to possibly allow us to consider enhancements to Ponce Circle Park, a dog park, or right-of-way improvements. Again, those were the three things that we heard or, uh, desired out of the public media that we ha- held back in October. So with those two modifications, we would certainly, uh, request that you adopt staff recommendations and conditions. Uh, my client has asked me in, in response to the concerns about the maximum height and someone's desire to possibly go to the hundred and ninety feet, we'd be happy to proffer as part of the restrictive covenant that's required in condition two, a limitation to a hundred and fifteen feet, eight inches to the roof line, so that there would be no future modifications, or at least they'd have to come forward if, if we were to, at some point, sell the property for whatever reason, a modification would have to be brought forward to that covenant, um, and approved by the city. And then lastly on the tra-, again, we addressed the traffic issue. So I think that was all I wanted to say for the record. If there are any further questions from the board, we're happy to take them at this time.
I didn't understand what you said about the removal of the slip lane condition.
Yes. If I, if I could just turn your attention to page twenty-nine of the staff report, uh, you'll see, uh, condition four B one, four B Roman at one on that page, says safety improvements, all traffic flow modifications, including removal of the slip lane. Our, our submittal does not contemplate the removal of the slip lane. Again, we've heard that from the public. It contemplates its retention. Uh, we would just ask that the board, uh, consider modifying that condition to remove, uh, that language. And i- in terms of, uh, I think there's a related, there's a related language, uh, with respect to the public Plaza subcondition in Roman at two, uh, that again references the elimination of the slip lane as well.
Okay. So I get it. I get it straight. You're, 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 you're saying this is, isn't what you want. You don't want to include the removal of the slip lane?
No, ma'am. We, as we've presented, uh, the, our plans, it, it contemplates the retention of the slip lane.
Okay. But it looks like a very narrow slip lane that's paved, has pavers on it.
It's, it's, yes, it's, it's pavers. It acts almost like it's a ra-, a, a raised table for traffic calming, so that it improves the pedestrian connectivity, but does not lose the effect of allowing people to kind of bypass the intersection and access University Drive, which what we understood from the public was a significant concern in response to the prior submittal.
Okay. So you're going to maintain the current width of the slip lane for vehicular traffic? Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am. It would be as dimensioned in the plans, but it would retain the slip lane. So that bypass, uh, functionality that is present today would remain with the aesthetic modifications we've puru-, we've proposed. Excuse me.
Okay. So you're asking us to approve taking a public right-of-way and giving it to a developer?
No, we, we are not. That's, no, ma'am. If I can clarify for the record, the, all of the, all of the elements beyond the base building, line of the building are pub-, are public realm improvements. So we're basically at that section widening the sidewalk. There's some on-street spaces that are being removed. The slip lane will remain and we're creating the Plaza or Park open space across the slip lane.
But you are narrowing a pub-, a current public right-of-way and giving yourself more sidewalk?
A- and the public more sidewalk, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. Would, would your project exist without narrowing that slip lane?
Yes, it could.
Okay. Then why are you narrowing the slip lane?
Again, we, we have, in our public meetings before I came on board, we heard this is a concern. We wanted to retain that functionality. Uh, we have not received any adverse comments about the design and the dimension of the slip lane. Staff has indicated a desire to see it removed. We're just trying to honor our expressed representations to the public at those public meetings. Hopefully I'm addressing your question. I'm trying to.
I, I think.
Well, you're repurposing a public right-of-way is what you're doing. You're repurposing our street.
I, I, I think we're trying to prioritize the pedestrian realm, certainly, uh, in the design versus having more on-street spaces. We're paying for the cost of the removal of those on-street spaces. So it's coming out of my client's pocket. Every space that we remove and we don't replace, we pay a significant penalty for. Um, but, but we have heard loud and clear that people wanted the ability to dress, maintain a certain level of traffic by allowing people to bypass the intersection so they could access University Drive. The design, we believe, accomplishes that and improves the aesthetic and of, of the pedestrian realms as well.
Can we see the evidence, please, from the public? What, what public said that they want to repurpose that lane?
Can I make a comment, please? It may be, instead of going back and forth that way, if you don't mind, can you tell us what the width of the existing slipway is and what your proposed width is? And maybe the architect can tell us the reasoning. Maybe it's traffic calming. I understand that it's because of the residents have expressed it. But maybe if we get a better understanding of it, it may answer some questions.
Sure. We'll give you the, we'll get to those details in a second. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Continue, Sue.
Well, my, my question is, you keep saying the public wants the narrowing of the slip lane. Where's the evidence? Where, where are the public comments in writing? Uh, what public are you talking about? We have members of the public here. They didn't say anything about, we want a narrower slip lane.
And Ms. Colossi, I, I can't, I can't give you empirical evidence other than represent to you the conversations we've had both with individuals and at the October twenty-fourth meeting where we presented the plans. There were approximately twelve to fifteen people there from eight different households, uh, of closer proximity than the two, uh, individuals that are here today. And again, we presented them with this design and what they, what they reaffirmed was our design aesthetic and our retention of the slip lane. And I, and I just want to be fair to them. Uh, their names are in the record. We indicated that we would be presenting it as it was presented to them. And I certainly do not want to tell you that we are advocating for the adoption of a condition that would somehow be the opposite of what we had indicated at that public meeting.
Okay. Well, I would need evidence that people actually stated at a public meeting or somewhere that, or in writing, that they actually want to reduce a public right-of-way.
Sue, the gentleman's an attorney. He would be breaching his oath.
Well, all I'm asking for is the evidence. I, I'm on a quasi-judicial board. I have to make a decision based on evidence. I have no evidence that the public said that.
I, I certainly don't have anything that I can give you affirmatively to, to certainly ratify that. We, we, you know, I, I don't have anyone's statement on the record that I, or somebody I could put on the record that could, um, reaffirm that. I could certainly bring up my clients. They could reaffirm what I'm saying, but I don't have a member of the public present here who could say that this evening.
All right. Well, I mean, we have, uh, three members, uh, two members that spoke. Uh, I don't know if we have other members of the public. Maybe they, they can address this, but I have no evidence from you that the public wants this.
Any other comments, Sue?
Uh, not, I have other comments, but about the slip lane, uh, that's my comment is, uh, we're making, they're making a determination. The public wants to narrow a slip lane to their benefit, and I don't know who that public is. There's no, there's no evidence.
But what I'd like to ask you to do is continue with your process. That you have the applicant, the attorney here.
Okay. And this might be, uh, directed more towards the, um, the architect rather than you. I'm not sure. But, but you might be able to answer this. So it's a hundred and fifteen feet to the roof line plus twenty. So we're at a hundred and thirty-five. Does that include that tower?
No, ma'am. I think the tower, uh, I believe goes to a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-six feet.
I'm sorry?
Hundred, a hundred and eighty-six feet.
The tower is a hundred and eighty-six feet?
The tower, correct.
Okay. So we're almost at that one ninety, right? So it's a hundred and eighty-six foot tower. Oh my goodness. I wish you would have, you know, described that in your, in your explanation of this because it didn't look like it was a hundred and eighty-six feet, but you're saying it's a hundred and eighty-six feet. So it's not really a hundred and fifteen. It's a hundred and eighty-six feet foot project.
The, just the tower element, and again, um, given, I'll, John, maybe address this, John, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. You know, one of we, one of the things we've heard is obviously want to incorporate the traditional design aesthetic of coral gables. And so the tower element is a central feature of that. It's not functional space. It's not, it's not considered habitable space, but it does, we did, we do represent all the drawings, the total dimension. That was something we discussed with the public. So should not be surprised by that. But the elements that are, that are habitable elements are at a hundred and fifteen feet, eight inches, ma'am.
Okay. But let, let's be honest. The project is a hundred and eighty-six feet.
In one look, John Cunningham, Ziskovich Architects Partner.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
I was getting there. I just said, John Cunningham, Ziskovich Architects, two fifty Park Avenue South, Suite five ten, Winter Park, Florida, three two seven eight nine. Our home office is here in Miami. Um, when you look at the whimsical buildings that Meisner built or had built, like, you know, um, Schultz and Weaver, the Biltmore, and others that were imagined that didn't get built and the colonnade, there, there are all these wonderful whimsical towers, spires. Of the whole project, only thirty-five feet in width goes up and stair steps back, just like we imagined on the, um, Humber Tower many years ago. And it's the idea of bringing in that whimsy and that i- i- the building stops hard at a hundred and fifteen feet. We have, as you saw in the project, there's the tile roof with a five-foot overhang of pecky cypress and wood brackets underneath to hold that hundred and fifteen foot, actually lower, probably about a hundred and thirteen feet is where that, all that wood, that rich wood would be. What we've al-, what we've also done in that, in those perspectives, is on the eighth floor, eroded on either side of the element of the tower to begin to liberate it and created those two very thin wood-like columns and those lower roofs, so that the tower, you know, if, if we had our druthers to do it classically correct, we would have made that spire a hundred and, or two hundred and twenty feet tall. But respecting, like in, when I worked in Washington DC on many buildings around the Capitol and in historic districts there, you had to stay lower than the dome of the Capitol. And so every building that I've had the opportunity to propose get built, or some not get built, we stay below the height of the tower of the Biltmore because that's the grand old dame in the community. And so it's just one element that starts at thirty plus or minus feet, erodes and then steps back to that spire. And it's just, it's just a beautiful whimsical element rather than having a flat-roofed building that so many people do. And you get these nine, ten, fifteen-story Walgreens-type buildings, you know? I'm not going to criticize other buildings in town, but we're, we're creating an articulation. The other thing that we've done for the community is, rather than having a continuous curved facade, we created two bookend elements. And then we created the center element. And we have these twelve-foot outdoor rooms. And in some cases, as mentioned earlier, and to stand corrected, it was actually Spencer's idea to do the multi-story, two-story units, so that we could take the continuous cookie-cutter aspect of balconies out. And then you get the two-story colonnade in certain locations. Um, so we've gone to great lengths. And in addition, the beautiful notion of the, um, Mediterranean code, you know, requires many things that we just revel in. And it requires a base, a middle and a top to the building, as I'm sure you know. And on the base, what we did, you'll see that stands proud on all facades other than the west, which is against the existing building, is a very strong one, a very tall one-story base, which has the mezzanine, which is all retail. And we packed that full of people-oriented places, you know, outdoor seating, mature trees that they're going at great expense to bring in, very large caipox and others. Additionally, we carved out of the retail that could have been retail, that semi-elliptical space under the archway. And if you looked closely, there's extraordinary historic detailing in the arcade carved out of coral stone, much like the stone here and on your building here in the city hall. Additionally, in the passeo, like you think of the great passages and passeos and arcades all throughout Europe, we thought very deeply about that human element. And there's retail that breaks out. There's multiple fountains like you find in Europe. We brought the glass skylight down so that in the center, it's not just all, not, you know, illumination, electrical lights. Further, we created this iron, you know, there's a passage for residents only to a second-floor outdoor amenity in that courtyard. And we created this celebratory iron gate. You might have, you saw in the rendering that he brought, the elevation that he brought up. And just past that is this beautiful Spanish steps that you go up with these cascading walls that could have, that'll have planters on them. And when you get to the top, there's two bridges that go across that passage, that the passeo. So there's this donut, the circular element, so you can get to the shops upstairs or a spa. And so we've got, and then on the other side, on Catalonia, which, you know, is such a quiet street and has the opportunity to fur-, to further be enhanced as a people place and more restaurants and things on the ground floor other than that garage that we're going to look out to. We've created this very, very, very important ironwork, marquee covering. And there's all these castings that are European-inspired within the, within the stonework. If you look deeply at that, some very intricate casting. And we've taken Moorish and Gothic and Mediterranean, um, patterns for all the ironwork that's, rather than having standard doors to the loading area where, you know, the owners are very concerned. We've, we've created incredible ground floor. You know, the scale of that, the real point is the scale of that base is very human. And we've tried to bring to the concerns of a few neighbors. Again, we don't, you know, we had public meeting, we had, not public, we had meetings with the neighborhoods. And they started, we had a scheme, I, I think it was last November, and we sat there and sketched with them and redesigned the building to help, you know, they had the pen in my hand, but they were guided, they were guiding it. And this building is, out of many multiple community meetings, has become the, again, I know you said you have no evidence of that. He stated that as an attorney, that we've had those meetings. And they, they have tapped at that and they understand that we've brought everything we can. So we have the one-story arcade, twenty feet tall. And then we have a very strong expression line at the fourth floor, partially because of the wonderful code that says you have to step back. Not only on the southeast facade, do they have their eleven-foot outdoor room, but there's an additional, I don't know, ten or twelve feet of outdoor terrace that's going to be landscaped by the owner and create this wonderful, you know, cascading wall of, of vegetation. So to the fourth, this, the tall one-story and to the fourth floor, we've taken great pains to really bring the human scale down. And then on the remainder of the building, with the articulation of the heavy overhang in the roof, if you think of the smaller events building at, um, the Biltmore, which is easier to identify, and you think, you look up and you see that grand overhang, that's what we're trying to duplicate.
And, you know, I really appreciate that. And Ziskovich does design very, very nice buildings. Uh, but I was just talking about the height. Can you build whimsy into a hundred and fifteen-foot building?
No, because it would just be, it would just be across the board.
Uh, uh, unless, unless you were MX one and your actual building was less than a hundred and fifteen, right?
Right. But that's.
So, uh, so that's another, I just have, I just have only one other question, but I really do appreciate your recommendation. If, if, uh, if the alley was not vacated, would you be able to do this project?
No.
Okay.
And, and again, I just wanted for the record to clear, the, the alley really serves no purpose. We own properties on both sides. It's intended to provide access for, host of back-of-house functions. The program that's in front of you contemplates access for loading, storage, utilities via other means. And so it's not atypical and, um, you know, alleys are essentially, uh, property, private property held in trust. When the conditions no longer justify or substantiates its necessity, I think a staff has found, I think a repro-, a request of this type is appropriate.
Okay. So one last question. Uh, you've been assembling the, the properties, the plaits from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and eighteen. During that period of time when you were assembling the properties, you knew that there was a public right-of-way, correct? When you were assembling these properties?
Which right-of-way are you speaking about, Ms.?
The alleyway. It's a public, we own it. The public owns that alleyway.
I, I, you know, I, I defer to Mr. Collier, but I think tho- though- I, you know, I defer to Mr. Collier, but I think those alleyways are dedicated for a purpose. When the purpose no longer exists, it's appropriate for them to be, to revert back to the adjoining ownership.
But that's not my question, sir. My question is, you knew that it was a public, we own, the public owns that alleyway, correct? I mean, you don't own it, you don't own it, that's why you're asking for us to give it to you.
We own the reversionary interest, and I think your code specifies a series of conditions, which your staff believes we meet, that the alleyways no longer serve that public purpose, and hence the request to have it abandoned. But I'll defer to Mr. Collier on that.
Okay, but, but for example, if the city decides we want to build a little café in an alleyway, there would be a new public purpose and the city would be owning that property, correct?
No, ma'am, I don't think that would be consistent with the grant under the plat.
Okay. The bottom line is, you knew from 2011, when you started assembling the properties, there was this big fat alleyway in between the properties, that it was public space. You don't own it. It's public space. And yet you, you bought the properties around it and you took a risk that you would have a board that would say, "Go ahead, take the public space. We don't need it anymore." Is that what you assumed?
No, ma'am, I think what we assumed is that we could follow the conditions in the code and the criteria that are specified. And if we could demonstrate that the alley was no longer needed, that we could make a, that we could petition for its abandonment. And that's what we've done. I mean, ultimately, it's at the discretion of this board, and the city conditioned to determine whether those conditions have been met. We would submit to you that the conditions have been met and that the parties that are intended to be benefited, which are the abutting owners, no longer have a need for the alley. Because they can provide access for the same utilities and/or other public purposes by providing those, by providing those spaces within the confines of the property.
But you will admit that you took a risk when you bought all these properties. You took a risk.
I would venture to say that my client has taken substantial risk with this project. We've been at this process, they've been at this process much longer than I have for the better part of four years. And, you know, again, it's up to this board to make a determination, and we'll respect whatever determination you render.
This board only makes a recommendation.
That's correct, thank you, sir.
All right, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, any further comments?
Not at this point.
Okay. Chip?
Felix, I know he's...
You want to go?
Sure. I learned so much from him, so. But he's got a mask on, so I don't trust him, because my just... There we go.
He does have a mustache.
And a mustache, yeah. I was reading the minutes, and it was funny, Chip said he'd give me $5 for taking my mask off.
I forgot about that.
So, many of my questions have to do with staff, and I think, unfortunately, I read every single word of the application and everything that was the backup on it. And unfortunately, I think that there's a huge disconnect, and I want to address this specifically to staff. In the findings of fact, in the city staff's evaluation, it says the city's responsibility is to review the application for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies, compliance with the zoning code. And one of the things that I looked at is that I'm looking at this, this area around this particular parcel, and it goes, it's a circle, basically, the impact that we're looking at. And in there, the staff comments, the request for the zoning code map amendment from mixed use one to mixed use three is connected to the request for a comprehensive land use map amendment to the, to high commercial, high, sorry, commercial high-rise. And it's stated, it says that the existing mixed use one designation only allows 77 feet. Of course, that's with, it's 50 feet, and 77 feet with med bonus level two. And the 190 feet, which is allowed in the mixed use, the neighbor hit it right on the head when she said that, once you change that map in that location, then even if we have a restrictive covenant, the people that own the parcel, immediately abutting them, or not necessarily, just a little further to the west, will have that as their point of reference, that, no, we want you to continue moving the MX3 in that. I think that's, that's huge, because the high-rise and the other neighbor that said that the rendering specifically, when you look toward the west, it's all single-family residential to a duplex. I mean, one and two-story. I think the tallest building that was in that rendering in maybe two or three miles was possibly the Coral Gables U Center, which is a two-story building, but it was built with big volumes because of their gym, et cetera. I think it is so out of keeping, and the disconnect between what I think staff should be doing as far as protecting the comprehensive land use plan has been missed. The alley vacation, the importance of that, is that there are two parcels. One parcel to the east is 14,120 square feet. The parcel to the west, on the other side of the alley, is 25,828 square feet. You're required to have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Once you combine and you give the alley back to the developer, then it's only 3,000 square feet. But the most important part now is that, now the entire parcel becomes a minimum of 20,000 square feet, you meet and exceed it. But right now, the parcel to the east does not comply with that, and therefore it cannot be changed. It cannot use and it cannot take advantage of those requirements, because the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, even if you have the same ownership. And you can't have a unity of title to go over an existing alley. The alley, by the way, is now being converted into, and the proposal is being converted into a passeo. The problem with the passeo is that, or rather, the purpose of the passeo was that, and when we had long rectangular blocks, and we had developments that were running on both sides of the street, the only way the pedestrians, unless they walk all the way to the end of the street, they would cut through the passeo. And that was to be able to maintain the activity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, the passeo basically is exactly where the alley is. The second thing is that this is not a rectangular parcel, plus the fact it's not a full block. So there's a curve on the end, so we have basically a quarter of a pie on the end. A passeo is not needed. It's being used, but it's not needed. It's being used now as a light well by the architect, and the architect did a great job The staff says that abandoning this because it does not provide a benefit, in other words, this alley. And that is because it is not being used by the city for any of its intended purposes. And that's true, because right now, it exists because those are looked at as two different properties. But now, when you combine them and you unify them, now you could do much more. This board has looked at other parts of legislation for assemblages of parcels to actually reduce the size and the footprint. And recently, one where we said, "Well, 300 feet, that's too long," or maybe that's, we should, you know, have some type of limitation. Now we're actually going in the reverse order. If you look at the shape of the block, if you look at the location, and really, the 800-pound gorilla in the room is the alley in order to make the entire thing the minimum of the 20,000 square feet. The other thing is that on the TDR transferences, it just says that, that all of this is going to happen to be scheduled. It's not even scheduled. I would think that you would have to have all your ducks in a row before you come before this board or the commission. So I would think that that must occur before you come to PMZ, and staff chose to be scheduled as a response. The conditional use for the mixed-use site plan and encroachments, we've talked a lot also about adding more landscaping at the ground level, but here we are pushing encroachments again. I mean, I think it's pretty simple. You either do it one way or you do it the other way. And you don't give people height to be able to have more landscaping on the ground floor. And you don't approve or promote encroachments to then later say, "Well, let's give them more height so we could get more landscaping for the next developer." And one of the things under Section E of the conditional use is, it says that mixed-use district to serve the needs of a diverse community while ensuring that there is a transition to single-family and duplex neighborhoods that protects the integrity of these neighborhoods. It's right in our code. But the indifference, the disconnect, staff has approved every single one of these measures, and the last time this particular application came before this board, they recommended denial on every single one of them. The words mean something, and if you read the words, not look at the graph where it says, "Staff recommends approval." Staff recommends approval. Read the words, and you have to think and ponder whether they make sense or not. And I don't think they do, because I think there's a huge disconnect. The conditions of approval, the removal of the slip lane. The applicant is standing here and saying, "You know, the slip lane is not a bad idea. The traffic is incredible in the area. The plaza is not even up and running 100%. I have never, in my life, seen bumper-to-bumper traffic north and south on ponds around Harnett Park. Not only did they say it once, under conditions of approval, removal of the slip lane, inclusion of on-street, whatever, "Two, eliminate the slip lane." And we have the applicant saying, "Let's leave the slip lane because it's not a bad idea." Right now, the Allen Morris Company has done beautiful developments over the years, and they hire very good architects to do great projects. This project is the wrong project in the wrong location. There is no transitioning left anymore. We're opening Pandora's Box again. We have massive projects that are under construction just east of Lejeune Road, facing both single-family and duplexes that have heights of two stories. I think it's just so unbecoming that I cannot endorse this project. But the last thing I wanted to let you know about is that the quarter-mile radius that is in the code for, whatever it is, for the...
1,500 feet?
The notifications, it's basically just a hair over a quarter of a mile, the radius, just a hair over a quarter of a mile. But the impact of these large projects is much greater than a quarter of a mile. The traffic, the volume, the congestion, the impassibility of our existing streets, it's become an abomination. And the problem is that these single-family residential neighborhoods are under complete assault. The master plan is being changed like if it didn't exist. That is a huge mistake, which, once these things get approved, it's irreversible. That radius of a quarter of a mile, when I looked at staff's graphics, I made copies of them, and I found it absolutely incredible that we have, on the inside reverse radius of Harnett Park, we have a high-rise, a high-rise section there, and then across the street, we have, of course, the plaza that was changed to commercial high-rise. There's nothing to the south, and there's nothing to the west. It's all commercial low-rise intensity. The further you get closer to the CBD, then you have high-rise. That's where it should be kept. There are a couple areas that were designated a long time ago as high-rise, and they were, let's call them mistakes, but those are standing by themselves. For example, there's a high-rise set immediately where the easternmost portion of the court is, the courthouse. Well, once you look south, and actually north to this particular property, it's, it's If you look at the statistics that are in the site plan information, staff does not correct their assertion, under building height, they say 16 floors, 190.5 feet, under current allowed, that is not current allowed, it should be in the other chart. But the current allowed is 50 feet and 77 feet with med bonus level two. That's for a mixed-use one. If you change that particular land use to MX3, everybody and their brother are going to ask for it. The amount, the burden that you have created and the pressure that you've created on those single-family homes is just unbearable. And the other thing is that I looked at the circle, and I just took a highlighter, and I started to just put in there, within the quarter, quarter-mile radius of the ad, and I started to fill in everything with a highlighter in yellow, and I saw that about half of the circle, not counting the north part, which is all commercial, half of the circle is single-family residential, and that's a quarter of a mile. The change of the master plan affects everyone in this city. And the precedent that this board sets is the most important recommendation that they could give this council when they approve or deny something. I think it's really important that we understand the seriousness of this project, the seriousness of changing a comprehensive land use plan, the seriousness of allowing a, an alley to then be complacent in making a property now being able to go higher, simply because now it becomes one lot that has the 20,000 square feet. And as far as the slip lane is concerned, how can staff basically recommend against what the applicant was trying to do, which was leave the slip lane there? The million-dollar contribution by the developer says to make a $1 million contribution to the public realm improvements. There's no breakdown. It's a million dollars, that means nothing. Million dollars for what? To, to, to put maybe a landscape strip in the middle of ponds south of Bird Road? I don't know where the money is going to go. It has nothing to do with the immediate action and reaction of what's going to happen to these neighborhoods that are nearby. Just take a look at the plaza now, as you see how this project has been developed, and now you're starting to see the impact. Impassable, four-lane roads like ponds, backups, congestion, and encroaching into single-family residential neighborhoods. I moved here into a single-family residential neighborhood, if I wanted to live in a condominium, I would have done that. But I didn't. I didn't move into a high-rise, and we're the only ones that can protect them, because I don't think that staff is doing that. And I have a real problem with that. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chip, now that you've heard Felix?
I heard Felix. The park across the street, little triangle, who's going to end up owning that? Is that, the city still going to maintain ownership on that?
Through the chair, yes. The intention is for that to be public property, and we would retain the maintenance obligation. The intention is for that to be public property and we would retain the maintenance obligation as we have on our building at 121 Alhambra, sir, when it was approved. We did the public improvements. We continue to maintain the medians in the center of the right-of-way to this day.
So part of that million bucks is going to improve that? Or no, is that separate?
No, sir, that's separate. So as described in the presentation, we anticipate that the public realm improvements we're doing for that plaza and the perimeter of the property would be about $2 million. We committed, after discussion with staff, to another $1 million. Staff had identified improvements to University, I think in part because they wanted to improve pedestrian connectivity and functionality, the aesthetic of that right-of-way. We had just heard some other requests from the neighbors and wanted the flexibility to respond to staff's priorities and the neighbors' priorities after some discussion. All of that would have to be done before we could pull a building permit.
So that triangle is really only accessible from that walkway from where your, the front of the building is, right? I mean, you're not going to be able to cross over University to get to it or?
Yes, you could, sir. Through the chair, you could, yes. You know, it would be, you'd have the, you have the, you have the at-grade pedestrian crossing today, south of that area, across University, down to the courthouse. So it would be accessible from points beyond our property, certainly.
Did you have a chance to figure out how much of a reduction of the slip lane there was going to be?
We, my apologies, the plan size we have, the size, it's hard to read on the 11-by-17 set that we have. We, yeah, we tried to blow it up. I'm, again, I apologize, I don't have the information at the ready. I hadn't anticipated that question. I will, at future hearings, have that information and be able to respond to similar requests.
And to reiterate, I believe previous boards that I served on here, it was a concern, the slip lane was removed in the previous application, and I think some folks had issues and wanted to make sure it was maintained, so.
Through the chair, just to clarify, because I know it was a point of contention, having reviewed the record in the past, that area was being counted to the benefit of the project. It is not in this iteration. Again, how the public space is apportioned may be different, but it all remains public. And again, we do have, we are planning for a functional drivable slip lane with, I think the difference being that it will serve also as a, in some ways, a speed table to reduce possible pedestrian conflicts and give the pedestrian a little bit more primacy in an area of Coral Gables where sometimes vehicular pedestrian conflicts currently exist.
I don't know that I'm in favor of a speed table there. I mean, the reason for the slip lane is to keep traffic moving around the circle and having to... So the question about the changing to the MX3, and I guess this is for the city attorney, I understand Mr. Pardo's concern that it kind of allows a neighbor now to say, hey, I've got MX3 next to me. But as far as restricting the use on this property, if it's ever sold in the future, does a covenant do that?
Well, if the applicant is proffering a covenant, it would be connected with the comprehensive plan amendment. So, and really, the covenant should be at least listed in the comprehensive plan as existing so that when somebody goes to comprehensive plan and looks at that MX3, there is a footnote or some indication that there's more to it. And then you go to the footnote, which would reflect that a covenant exists that only permits to a certain height. And with respect to the height, it's my understanding that the tower under the city's code is not considered part of the height. So the maximum height would be the
115 eight.
115 eight. And if the applicant is voluntarily proffering a covenant to do that, that covenant should be, can only be modified as part of a comprehensive plan amendment and should be listed in the comprehensive plan as part of the comprehensive plan. So yes, it is MX3. I'm sorry. The covenant is high-rise.
Commercial high-rise intensity.
Commercial high-rise, but it's restricted to
115 feet.
115 feet. Now, on the MX3, on the zoning, they could also submit a covenant, I guess.
We could. I believe they work in tandem. And so, again.
Well, you have one covenant for the comp plan, one covenant for the zoning code.
So I, through the chair, if I may ask a question of council, novelty for me here. We are required to provide a covenant should this, should these applications be approved within 30 days of their approval.
That covenant is rolling in all the requirements. That's separate and apart from the covenant you would be doing in a comp plan.
That was my question. Could we just not list that restriction in the covenants? It would be of record and title as well and have that be a proffered restriction that we would incorporate in the submittal?
Well, if you, if you get to that point, we can discuss it.
Okay. That would be certainly our intention.
So there's no way to say that the MX3 is allowable, but if this project isn't built exactly like this, the zoning reverts back to MX1 as opposed to a covenant?
You can't do it as a reversion in the covenant. What you can have in the covenant is that this property is restricted to this height. You can't condition the zoning, but if there's a proffer of a covenant saying, we are going to only build to 115 foot, eight inches, right?
That's correct.
Then that's all they can build. And of course, it goes with land. Now, like any covenant, covenants are always, there's always a possibility, somebody requests to modify a covenant. So no covenant can exist forever. There's always a possibility, just like zoning. Just because you have one zoning doesn't mean somebody can't request a different zoning. Now, as a practical matter, when you have the project built and it's built to 100 whatever feet, they have to demolish it, but even still, they would still have this covenant. They'd have to come back to the commission and ask for a modification of the covenant.
I get it. So, okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chip. Fabio?
Yeah. Question for the architect. What is your floor-to-floor for the standard apartment floor?
Twelve and a half to 13 feet.
That's because you wanted a high quality going to your space.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. This is not the first time that this has come up. And I think it's something that, as the planning board, we should look at. We've tied ourselves to a fixed height on these projects. I'm sorry.
It's off. Nope, B4. There you go.
Hello? Okay. And what's happening is that the developers are coming in with buildings that have higher floor-to-floor height for the building to be able to create the kind of quality that the tenants and buyers are looking for. So I think we should take a look at that as a board and maybe fix the number of floors, but not the height being the fixed element. Because otherwise, we're going to be having changes to the zoning every time. And we're going to have to be looking at each building individually to see how they adapt to this floor-to-floor height. That's a statement which I think I've been thinking about for a while and we wanted to bring it up to me. It is one of the nicest projects I've seen come here. Very well-designed, very nice drawings. It's, I wish a lot of the quote-unquote Mediterranean buildings that we get in Cedar Coral Gables will have the higher level of quality that this one has. It's a key site. It's an entry to the CBD. As you move up ponds, it's the first thing you're going to be seeing. And right now, we're just nothing there. I don't have any problem with closing the alley. It's been done all the time. As a matter of fact, I understand that the city commission approved it. So it's a moot point.
Yep. So just to clarify for the record, Mr. Gabriel, it was approved by this board with the par submittal. It was never approved at the city commission, which is why we're back with the request again.
I apologize. I misunderstood. things I like about the project, all the parking below level. Very difficult to do quality buildings with parking above ground. I agree with the future owner covenant. I think this, this is approved, nobody else should be allowed to benefit from the changes I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Javier?
Thank you. On page six of your report, you show the court, the court building, the county court building site.
Yes, the south.
And it is MX3, is that correct?
Correct.
And the curved building on, just south of Harnett Park is MX2, is that correct?
Yes, so the Zuby Building.
The Zuby Building doesn't extend all the way to that point. It only extends for half of that parcel, right? The south portion?
Right.
And as I recall, that Zuby Building, when it was built, it also has a right-of-way which was maintained through there.
Right. And they
It had all the access, so they, as I understand it, an alleyway is really just an access easement. It's not really an ownership issue. It's more of a, of a long-term agreement between the government and the owners of the land that they have public right access.
Can I just address that for one moment? Because there's a little bit of confusion. Because actually, the city has litigated this issue. The alleyways are dedicated by the property owner for the particular use. The city is a steward of that property.
Correct.
The city doesn't own the property, but it has the right of use of that property. And in circumstances where the alley is no longer determined, and of course, that's, has to be at a public hearing, that the alleyway has that use, it's, it's not inappropriate for the city to turn that back over to the property owner that's dedicated it because they dedicated it for that particular purpose. But the decision, of course, is in the discretion of the commission, but there's criteria in deciding whether it's appropriate for the alley to be, to be vacated or not.
And if I may, I'm Hermes, the SPOLE Works Director. As per Florida statute, an alley is defined as a means of right-of-way, providing secondary means of access and service to abutting property. That's the Florida statute definition of an alley. So, all right?
Question. So who actually owns it?
So actually, technically, the property owner retains a reversionary interest in it. There's no deed that's transferred to the, to the city. They, what happens in a plat, when you plat the property, there are dedications, dedications of right-of-way, streets, alleys, multiple different types of utilities. Those dedications are dedicated to the city for the purpose for which they're intended. If the purpose is no longer there, then the dedicator, the original property owner, has a right to request, well, you're not using the thing that I dedicated to you, I would like to have it back.
So who's the property owner?
Through the chair, we are, since we own both sides that abut the alley and have a vested interest in a reversionary interest to the midpoint of the alley on the other side.
You are officially the property owner of that public right-of-way?
The, no, we are the owners, as Mr. Collier indicated, the owners of the reversionary interest. All parties that have an interest in the, a reversionary interest in the alley have to make application for its abandonment.
See, when, if a, if a street is obtained by eminent domain and the city actually buys the street, the city becomes the property owner. They paid for the street, they own the street.
And they get a deed.
If somebody wants it back, the city is not going to give it to them unless they obviously pay for it. When you're dedicating property for certain purposes, that dedication is for whatever that purpose is, whether it be a street and a street is used, or an alleyway if an alleyway is used. So when you say that, who is the property owner? Well, in this case, I would say that the property owner ultimately may be the person who dedicated, but it's subject to what the dedication was. If the dedication is used for a street, then the property owner has given away parts of the sticks of his bundle of rights. So he's given those sticks to the city and the city is using the road and therefore it's the city's road. So that's the best way I can explain it.
So the city owns it.
The city
There's no deed.
I understand that.
There's no deed.
But we're talking about the, these abstracts, like there's a dedicator. Who was the dedicator?
The dedicator is the, when, when you dedicate by plat, the property owner of the plat dedicates the rights of way and alleys to the city for the purposes that the city wants. So that's the purpose. But the dedication is subject to the use for the purpose of what it's dedicated for. So if it's dedicated for an alley and it's used as an alley, then it's an alley. If the dedica, if the alley is not used, then the person who dedicated has the opportunity, subject to approval, to come before the city commission and request it be returned based upon standards that are in the city's code.
And that's usually when the property owner owns both sides of the alley?
Or they're both in agreement.
And they both, or they're both in agreement.
And there's no thoroughfare or
But there's no need for
No need for the travel between those two properties.
Or provide, or provide access to services that benefit either, any of the abutting properties.
But just to be clear, I mean, you, you bought these properties on either side in 2011 to 2018. You do not own that property, correct?
We, again, as I've tried to clarify, I don't know how else to say it, and I apologize. I don't mean to talk past you. We own, I would say, we own a reversionary interest in the alley, hence why we've made the application.
What I'd like to do is have Javier finish.
Yeah, I have only a couple more questions and then I'm good. You're not off the hook, Jennifer. I just wanted to clarify the alley issue because it was a point of contention and I just want to make sure we all understand what we're doing. With regards to 250 Catalonia, which is the abutting property to the west of this property, is that correct?
Tall building.
It's, yes. It's a tall building. It's a very nice tall building. It's got a big atrium in the middle of it, huge parking deck that goes all the way down to Malaga. So we have the face of a parking deck facing Malaga.
Lovely, yes.
Lovely. Okay. That building is zoned in an area that is zone MX1, is that correct?
Yes.
That building can't be built in MX1 now, can it?
No.
Okay. What would it fall under?
It'd probably be, how high did I say it was?
Eight stories.
Eight stories? I think
Probably an MX3. Two or three, somewhere in there.
I think it was 89 feet on that slide.
Oh, whatever. It's way, way beyond what is there already by right.
Yes.
And so they'd be a fool to knock it down and try and build it bigger because they'd be, they'd be pushing a rock up a pretty steep hill.
Yes, it's 91 feet.
I just want to make sure that we're all understanding because there's been discussing at this board with regards to the surrounding uses and the limitations thereof. Final question with regards to, and I also agree with the inclusion of the slipway, or rather, the removal of that requirement as part of this, this review. And I would so move when it comes to that point if I have to. And I agree that the, that the alley and the patio are actually one and the same at right now. So that really what we're, what the city's releasing is very little. If anything, this is an expansion of an existing pathway through, except for vehicular access. I also agree with Mr. Withers with regards to the speed table issue. I would like to see a rough pavement there, but not necessarily too much of a vertical difference. difference. Accessibility across is what you're trying to promote. And I think that when you get to the public works here, you're going to have a lot to deal with with regards to bollards and things like that, similar to what occurred at Geraldo when it was closed.
Okay.
And other than the tower, would this project still be MX three because of the 115 feet?
Yes, because they're maxed out for MX two. Would it be 97 feet? Remember, we talked about that big jump between MX two and MX three.
I understand that, but in reference to Mr. Gabriel's comment, with regards to the number of stories, would it still be an MX three?
Yes.
Because is it over how many?
It's over the 97 feet.
I'm talking about feet. I'm talking about stories.
Believe them or stories, let me check.
My contention is, my contention is that an MX two would probably be more appropriate if the stories were less in height. So what we're really granting is an excess in height per story.
So eight stories is the maximum for MX two?
And the stories, height count for this project is?
Nine, sir.
So you're asking for one more story?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we all understand what we're asking for. So we're just over the threshold of two at the bottom end of three because I think three allows for how many stories?
Thirteen stories. Maximum is 16 stories with bed bonus.
And that's not without, that's without the bed bonus. With the bed bonus, you're still stuck at?
16 stories or 190.5.
And on MX two?
97 feet, or eight stories.
Even with the bonus?
With the bonus.
Just want to make sure.
Otherwise, it's 70 feet and six stories.
I just want to clarify it so we all know what we're talking about. So it's an increase of one story above what's allowed in MX two, an increase to MX three for the height only.
The density and the FAR stay the same, that's correct.
The applicant is willing to covenant.
To 115 feet?
Limit the 115 feet of development on this site as part of a separate covenant agreement beyond the conditions that we're going to be imposing, should it pass today.
If necessary, yes. We would hope to include the, that limitation in the same instrument, but whatever form is acceptable to your council.
I think the council has expressed that he wants two separate ones.
We can, we can...
One is a condition of development and the other one is a condition of rights of the land.
That's fine.
Is that correct?
Well, there's two, the covenant that's the comp plan, modification of a comp plan has a different procedure than modification of the covenant for the zoning context. So typically, I think you would have one covenant for the comp plan amendment and one covenant for the zoning code for the MX three rezoning that's being voluntarily proffered.
Mr. Chair, just to...
But we can work that out.
We will agree to whatever form your city attorney deems is appropriate.
Jennifer, one final question.
I just want to clarify something really quick. 115 is the bulk of the building, there's also a 20-foot cabana on top. That would have to be part of the covenant to allow what they're proposing.
Right, would have to be 115 plus whatever the cabana is.
But that cabana is set back approximately 40 feet from the front of the building, so it's visually not, from the street, not that big a deal. All right. The triangular portion is MX one next to the courthouse? So that's commercial?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the froiling block on Santander, on the other side of Santander, is multifamily?
A duplex, yes.
Okay, that's the end of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I actually think today's discussion was very healthy. I heard a lot of good points from everybody, and they're very valid. One thing that stands out to me is the amount of people that are here today for this project compared to when this project was being presented previously. We had a pack room and we had people that were very adamant about the height and the project itself. I think the Morris team actually put together good people for this project, from counsel to the architect. I commend them on that. They explain well, they go through the process very well. As far as the TDRs, there was a comment that was made that you don't have your TDRs yet while you come here. The practice and what has been done previously and what was explained to us is that the city also has TDRs for sale. And TDRs are a derivative of dollars and cents. Whether you go private or you go to the city, whatever that number is, but the TDRs are there. And without them being able to get the TDRs, this project would not be able to be built or get approval. As far as the alley, I don't have an issue with the alley abandonment. It actually, if I'm not mistaken, will now create a revenue for the city because that becomes part of the property to which there is a taxation that comes to help the infrastructures and build and so forth. The slipway, I do agree with my colleagues, I think that should be there. I would like to know what that number is because I agree that the slipway should allow for traffic to flow naturally and not reduce the traffic to where there is an issue. And I understand the need for wider sidewalks, and I think you're also trying to create a feature on the other side of the slipway. But I think the city should look closely with the applicant on how to best work that out going forward. As far as the height, I agree, Julio made a very good point, which I had really not thought about. We should look at the height of floors because I think what's going to end up happening is, you know, we may be looking now at 12 feet to 13 feet, tomorrow we can be looking at 16 feet to 18 feet because every developer wants to outdo what the other development project did. So I would urge the commission actually to start looking at that with projects because I think that'll ease a lot of concerns that are out there. As far as the tower itself, the tower itself is a small feature and it's open. It does not, to me, as one board member, it does not bother me. It actually reminds me of the other project, which is on Le June where the Citibank is, that they have a tower feature there and it's very open. I like the elements that they've done, the architecture that has been done is very good. I'm not on the architectural board, I'm not an architect, but it's pleasing to me. As far as if you allow this to happen, then that opens a door for everybody. While I understand what Mr. Pardo has said, we are here to look at every project individually, and we should not look at one project because another project got it. At least for myself, when a project comes before me, I look at it individually. How does it work? How does it fit? And so forth. I don't look at it because the person next door did it. Those are really my comments. I mean, you know, I actually commend the board because while there was a lot of passionate debate, I think it's healthy because it brings out a lot of issues that we need to look at in general. And, you know, each one of us makes a vote and a recommendation, and in the end, we are a recommending body, and it's up to the commission to decide for approval or not. With that said, anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, to speak clear, are we, we're taking motions on each of the items individually? Is that correct?
We got to take motions on each of the items.
I just want to say thank you for your time and attention. We appreciate your consideration and we'll listen to the results. Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question for counsel. You said about this covenant for the comprehensive land use plan.
Yes.
Are there any of those covenants that exist today in our comprehensive land use plan?
I believe that the, I would ask Jennifer, I don't know whether we've proffered, I will say this, I'm very familiar with the county. The county has numerous covenants that have been proffered in their comp plan, and what they do is, at the end, they list, they have an index of each of the, a reference, not the full covenant, but a reference so that when you're looking at the comp plan, you can see what covenants have been submitted in connection. Jennifer, you don't have a recollection of covenants submitted with the comp plan?
No, that's not a practice that we do here. Usually, it's a covenant that applies to land, but not necessarily part of the comp plan.
I was not aware, and that's why I asked you.
Well, it can be. I thought in the past, maybe before Jennifer was here, it was done, but yes, you can submit a, and the reason why that they're separate is because they're separate documents. The comp plan is the comp plan and the zoning code is the zoning code. So the, it's appropriate if you're going to restrict the, what is it, high-density commercial?
Yes.
That there, that it should be a covenant relating to the comp plan. The specific details, I think we can work out with the applicant and with the city attorney.
I just wanted to make sure that this board and the commission and the public understands that it is possible that this is the first time ever that a covenant is placed on the comprehensive land use plan.
It's possible. I seem to recall from my time with the service with this board that it was done, but I could be wrong. It's been eight years since I've sat with this board, so.
I think so.
And it would be done, obviously, at the commission. You all make a recommendation. Your recommendation would be, if you are interested in approving it, would be the acceptance of the proffered covenant, and I believe I heard from the applicant that he would proffer a covenant restricting the height for the comprehensive plan and for the zoning code. He's just not sure if he needs two separate documents or one document.
Jennifer, let me, can I ask you a question? And I'm sorry. And I don't want to bring some, something up from the past, but when we were talking or we were looking at the 2.5 instead of the three, how would this project have fallen within that 2.5?
How would have? Well, they, the 2.5 was presented as 110.5 as the base, it would go up to 137 and a half, or no, 110, zero was the base. But I know the maximum was 137 and a half.
Okay, and this project to the maximum is?
135, including the cabana.
So in other words, there wouldn't have been an issue with the covenant?
Correct.
If it would have been under 2.5? Okay.
If it existed.
Right, no, I'm saying if it would have existed, we wouldn't be looking at a three and having the concerns of the 190 feet.
Right.
Okay.
But just to clarify, they're adding a lot more architectural features than what would normally be allowed under MX two or MX three.
But they may have revisited.
But they're within that height.
They may have revisited at that point.
Maybe.
Okay. Do we have, anybody want to make a motion? We need to move this along.
I don't mind making motion, a motion on three of the items. I have no problem with the alley vacation.
So why don't we, why don't we start with that?
All right.
Okay, so...
I'll move the, was it E four? Is that the alley?
We can go out of turn as far as the motions. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Certainly.
Yes.
No, the re four is, E four is the replat.
You're looking at E three, which is the alley?
Yeah.
What would your motion be, Chip?
To approve it.
To prove it as noted?
Yeah.
With the staff's existing recommendations? What recommendation?
Well, I think the staff recommendation, this doesn't relate to the slipway.
Right, okay.
So I think this could be a straight approval of the alleyway.
I just want to be clear on that. That's why I said that. That's, okay. So we have a motion to approve with second. We have a second by Javier. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, so right now, would a unity of title be required between the parcels? Because when you revert, you're giving them, you're throwing the 20,000 square foot minimum lot size, which is their eastern lot. The reversion doesn't, these are multiple lots, they're not being replatted, so a unity of title should be added to this explanation.
They are being replatted.
E four is the replat.
There is a replat.
So all of it, east and west and the center portion, will be replatted as one parcel.
As one parcel. So you don't need a unity of title.
Correct. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
For E three?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
Zuka Valinsky?
No.
Felix Pardo?
No.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
And I'll approve, I'll also move the TDR, approving receipt of the TDR.
The TDRs would be the E four?
Yeah.
We have a motion on E four with the way it's existing? Is there a second? I second. Julio seconds. Any discussions on the TDR? No? Call the roll, please.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
Zuka Valinsky?
No.
Felix Pardo?
No.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes. You're on the roll, Chip.
Okay, and I'm okay with the replat on E four.
E four was the TDRs that we just voted.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You must be slipping.
I need, I need your mask. Okay, so I'll go with the E, that's E, I'm sorry, it's E six, right? I'll move E six.
Second. We have a motion on E six, we have a second with the way it's written. Chip?
No, I'm fine with the way it's written.
Okay. Any discussion? No, call the roll, please.
Zuka Valinsky?
No.
Felix Pardo?
No.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
That's kind of where I hit a wall. I, and I'll explain why. And again, I said this previously, I've known Allen for 50 years, and if he's not one of the best developers in our city, he's certainly one of the top two or three. He speaks of excellence, and like I said, I had no problem with those three previous issues. I do have a problem with going from MX one to MX three. It just, you know, we've spoken and I've always said that the transition area from downtown to residential is probably one of the most important things in our zoning code. And this kind of, you know, runs afoul from what I think the, you know, I believe. We wanted to go with MX two with a, maybe a variance. You know, I'm certainly open to that, but the leap from MX one to MX three is just, is just too big for me, so.
Is it because of the potential or is it because of the existing height of the design?
You know, over the way too many decades I've served the city, I've seen that map color change, the deeper reds and deeper reds and deeper reds as it gets closer to the shoreline of the residence. And, you know, Felix has been around here for a long time too, and it just seems, every time I look at that map, it just seems to get darker red and darker red as we get closer. And I just, I just have a problem with that.
I have to echo what Chip said. You know, once it's MX three, it's MX three. I did not really have any confidence in the explanation about the covenants. Like, yeah, it's a covenant until it gets changed. You know, I have no confidence in that. I agree with Chip, if you want to come back on a mixed use two to this board, but to change that in perpetuity to an MX three is just not acceptable for the neighbors.
Question. I hear what Mr. Withers is saying. I'll call you, Chip.
I'll call you, Chip. Um, the idea of it coming back as a MX2 with a variance approval for?
Additional heights?
Additional height? If you were to go for a variance, you have to provide, provide a hardship.
Correct.
And that idea is going to be difficult for the, the Board of Adjustment to take into account for, because there's not a trade-off. It's not like we're, we're changing a little bit of a setback here to pick up another little bit of a setback there, which is sort of an equivalency. And then that, that would be, that would be for the board to, to, to then actually approve at the Board of Adjustment, which would be fine. Or if there's a hardship, I guess you could say it's a hardship because it's a corner site and you're, but honestly, it's the, you're getting full use of the site, whether the, there, there's no setback differential that, that causes a hardship because of this corner situation. So those are, those are the two issues that board goes through. And as former chair, I can tell you that that would be a very difficult road to hoe for the, for the applicant to make. Whereas, right now before us, we have a, an applicant that's asking for a MX3, but only, in name only. He's, he's way to the bottom edge of what that MX3 would allow. And he's proffering that he would limit what he's going to do to, to what he's proposing. In the absence of MX2.5, which has been brought to this board now several times, okay? And shot down just about each and every time and sent back to, for recreation, we have this dilemma, and I understand. But at the same time, exactly to the south and across the street is an MX3 property already, such that I don't see that this is an incremental change that is detrimental to the, to the residential units to the south, in my opinion, in my.
Hi, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address that specifically.
Excuse me, Mr. Pardo. Can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
All right. I'd like to address that specifically. That parcel was during, during the era of spot zoning.
We had a couple of them.
Oh, yeah. And that's one of them. So what happened is, in fact, back in that day, there was no land use plan because that state statute didn't even exist yet. So I caution you, and there we go again. You see the red intensity? Well, I'm next door, I should get that. Basically, you're looking at that one. And what I'm trying to say is that because of the spot zoning, when they came up with the comprehensive land use plan, they tried not to take away the property rights of that owner because they were going to have a tough time defending the city against that. So this is not that the comprehensive land use plan was developed that way from the beginning. They accommodated something that existed from before, which today is 100% illegal, which is spot zoning.
Yeah, we have a few examples. I can think of them off the top of my head.
What I'm trying to say to you, Javier, is that when, when Chip says, you know, this thing is moving south toward the residences, I mean, I'm, I'm listening to the residents. I'm a resident here in commercial areas. Every, every time that thing gets closer and closer and closer, eventually there won't be a residential area, or the quality of life in that residential area is substantially altered forever. So I, I think that going.
It's a matter of adjacency, I agree. And, but the adjacency here between the single family and that particular, this particular parcel is measured in several hundred feet. At the very least, I can see 2, 4, about 500 feet. Look, I, I love, I think the building is beautiful. I have no problem with the height. I have no problem with the FAR. I have no problem with the cabanas. I have no, I have no problem with the tower. As far as the project goes, I have no complaint. I'm 100% in favor of the project. And, you know, I just have that issue of changing our, our Bible, our, our land use to the MX3. Maybe we do bring back to birth 2.5. I don't know, you know, or 2.25. I don't know. But, you know, again, that's just how, how I feel on this thing. I've, I've seen it happen in parts of the city that, that already worry me. And, you know, it's, it's, it's obvious. It's, it's happened literally across the street to the east. And again, that is a terrible project as a precedent, because that's one that came to this board. It's almost the reverse of this particular project, where it came to this board and was approved and approved and approved.
No, that's not, that's not correct. There were two of us that actually, well, there are two of us, Robert and myself, that didn't vote for it.
I'm talking about as a board. I'm not talking about as you as an individual. I was on the, I was here when it was approved the first time. I think you were as well. And, and then it came back before this board a couple of times, and much to the detriment. In this particular case, this is a project that came to us up here with a much higher level of density.
Yeah, it's come down.
And it's come down to way below half of what it was, it was before.
And they wanted, they wanted a public street. They wanted the park across the street. They've done everything that they've been asked to do.
Everybody said no. And the, the public came in and they all said no. And they were very vociferous about it. But I look at what our chairman has noted, is that the number of people and the specific issues that they have before us with regards to this project, for the most part, have been addressed.
Unless, unless those people were in the envelopes there.
There wouldn't have been enough people with, you know, their seats.
I'd like to figure a way to move this thing forward on the votes. So is there a motion that somebody would like to make, starting with the comp plan on E1?
I would like to make a motion that we approve item E1 with the condition that the applicant submit for legal approval a covenant writing with the land to limit the height of the building or any future development to what's been presented here today.
And just a technical note on the, on the motion. We can condition a comp plan, but the applicant has proffered a willingness to proffer the covenant. So it'd be the motion and acceptance of the proffered covenant.
That's satisfactory to the City of Coral Gables. And what about the slipway? Because the staff recommendation is to do a.
I don't think the slipway is addressed in the comp plan.
You're right. Sorry about that.
We, we need a second.
Is there a second?
I do a second.
Julio, we have a second. Any discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Felix Pardo?
No.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
No.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
Zuka Valinsky?
No.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
3-3.
Okay, that's a 3-3 tie, so there will be no, it goes without a recommendation. No?
No.
Oh, the comp plan. It's deemed in denial.
It's a denial.
It's deemed in denial. That's right. We made a change in, in the code. Yes, it's, it's, it goes.
It goes with a denial. It goes with a denial, sir.
Then E2 would be a moot point.
We.
You can't change the zoning without the comp plan.
But at that point, what are we doing?
But I, I think that the board, the, it, it will likely be a 3-3 tie, which will be no recommendation, I'm willing to bet. But I, I think the board can, can vote on it because we're, we're dealing with a recommendation, not a final decision. So it would be appropriate for the board to, to make a determination on that.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Julio, is there a second?
Are you sure this isn't a moot point? Because without the comp plan, this, this thing stops right here.
No, it doesn't stop right here. You made a recommendation. Your recommendation, your recommend, and as the Land Planning Agency, it's, it's a recommendation for denial, but it's not binding on the commission. Commission can still, what the commission needed from you and how this all got started, just to give a little history, is when you're serving as the Land Planning Agency, they, the commission needs a recommendation. So before, a 3-3 tie was no recommendation, and then we were stuck. So the code changed so that a 3-3 tie is actually a denial. So they have that recommendation. So I, I don't think that the, because the, if this were the commission, yes, it would be moot. But since you are making a recommendation, it's not moot, and you can, you can take a vote on this.
I'm remembering when this board, as a land planning board, would have the recommendations, and that was pretty much it at that point.
Well, that I don't know. That may be well before my time.
I think it's before your time.
Javier, would you like to second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a second for, to go through the process? Any comments?
And that would be with acceptance of the proffered covenant, right?
With the proper. With the proper covenant, and the slip doesn't text amendment, so. Yes.
One comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I, the, the city attorney knows how much I respect his opinion. I, I, I just, you know, I, I just am flabbergasted how, you know, we could do, unless you change the motion where it says, you know, on a conceptual or something like that. But I feel very uncomfortable voting on a zoning change once the master plan component was just turned down. I, I just want to put that on the record.
Well, we have counsel who advises us accordingly.
And I said, with all due respect. And I appreciate the respect of the, the board member. In this case, if this were the commission and a denial was made on the comp plan, that would end everything. So I'm complete agreement with you. But this board is making a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second with the same covenant that will be proper. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And the slipway doesn't take into account here either, so.
We have to do the site plan approval.
Any other discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
No.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
Zuka Valinsky?
No.
Felix Pardo?
No.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that does go without a recommendation, that's a tie vote.
Correct.
So we have one more.
Yes, sir.
Which is?
Was the mixed-use site plan?
E5.
E5. Which does, I want to get the concurrence from this city planner. That does include the, the, well, it's, these are all done in accordance with the department's recommendations, except now you're, you're disagreeing with the department's recommendation, and you're saying to retain the slipway as is.
Remove the recommendation?
To remove that part of the recommendation.
That part of the recommendation.
Number one and number two.
Correct.
Correct.
Again, through the chair, if I may, just with respect to Roman at 3 on the public realm contributions, if we could provide some additional flexibility to possibly explore responding to some of the other community requested improvements that were highlighted at our public meeting.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
On which?
That is Roman at 3, so 4B3, it specifically refers to the use of the contribution exclusively for improvements of a pedestrian bicycle facilities, landscaping, or other streetscape elements to University Drive right away from Ponce to Le June, Le June Road. And I would simply just add that, or other public improvements deemed advisable by the commission.
As approved by the commission.
As approved by the commission.
That's on, for E5?
That would be related to the site plan approval. We ask the conditional use approval with respect to modification to, again, 4B, Roman at 3. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on E5?
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that.
Were just listed.
Which we just listed are incorporated.
A second. We have a second. Any discussion? No? Call the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Julio Gabriel?
Yes.
Zuka Valinsky?
No.
Felix Pardo?
No.
Javier Salman?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes. So that passes. All right. I think we are.
What was the vote on that?
4-2.
4-2, right?
Okay. So we are done with.
I think a motion to adjourn is.
Now, there was some new business.
Okay, before we do that, we'd like to thank the applicant with their presentation and the staff and everybody that has come forward before us.
Mr. Chair, thank you for all of you for your time again and your indulgence this evening, your comments. I'd like to also thank staff, which has been a long, arduous but pleasant road working with them. So I want to recognize them and thank you, and again, happy holidays to all of you.
Oh, the tenant apply?
Yes.
We didn't do that.
Correct.
We did not.
The very last item.
No, thank you.
Which one?
I thought we did.
Thank goodness we didn't adjourn. Which one, which item is that?
I believe that was item, I believe it was adopted. I thought it was item 6. I have, I have my notes, Mr. Withers moving it, Mr. Salman seconding it, and it passing 4-2.
We did E6, we did E5.
We did it all.
Thank you.
We did them.
Again, happy holidays. Thank you all.
Thank you. We still have a meeting, if you would, but thank, you're, thank you.
So, so I just, I didn't know, I wanted to kind of tech, take the temperature of the board on, on something that's kind of resonated up. I wish Robert was here with us, where he said there was nothing we could do with the mandates on the development within transportation corridors. And I'd like to kind of get a briefing on that at some point, you know? Because I, I want to know what the city, how the city feels, and why we aren't talking to Naples, and why we're not talking to Orlando, and why we're not talking to Jacksonville, and why we're not talking about on this home rule issue, is why do we have the state or even the federal government mandating our city what we can do as far as planning and zoning within our municipality? And I, you know, all I hear is, you know, it's mandated and we can't do anything. So why can't we do anything? I mean, unless you can, unless you can, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I mean.
Would that also include the Live Local Act?
Yeah, yeah, the, the whole corridor issue.
I, I thought the city was devising some kind of posture.
I did, too.
This has been going on for months. I mean, Doral has done something on this very strongly. They, they put a moratorium on applications.
The, there are two, there are two things. I, I think you were talking about two different things.
Two different actions.
The first thing is the Live Local Act, which is a state law, which basically ignores any local authority as far as what they can or can't do within certain restrictions. That's the Live Local.
Right.
The second one are the major transportation routes, such as US1, where that's a county regulation. And what they've tried to do, and in fact, they've been shot down by their own commission, staff has, from a planning standpoint at the county on certain applications, because basically on these spines, these corridors that have, I can't remember right now, they have a specific name, but they're, let's call them super corridors for now. And there are several of them. US1 being one, I think 27th Avenue is one.
So these corridors and the one that were, I'm sorry? Exactly. Which was, which was, um, which was endorsed by, uh, one of our, our recently deceased, former assistant county managers. And, and the thing is that Mr. Oster, the, so when that went in, basically, it's doing the same thing where it's trumping, you know, our, our, um, control of these corridors. So US one is probably the major one, and I think that's the one you were talking about.
That's the most concerning one.
But tho, those are two that have basically the same type of connotation, where you could go above and beyond, and, and that's, I think, what, what Chip is mentioning, I think.
So do we need to ask city staff to look into it and maybe come back with a presentation?
100%.
Is that the consensus?
On the smart plan?
I was told the city attorney's office, the city attorney was developing some kind of posture on Live, uh, Live Local.
Yes, the next meeting we'll have a presentation for Live Local.
And you'll, we'll have some discussion on that and presentation.
And the draft ordinance.
Which will include both the city attorney and?
And what about the corridor, the corridor?
The smart plan?
The Dade County, uh.
I don't think that's a smart plan, is that part of the smart plan?
I don't think that's part of the smart plan.
The RTG?
Well, you know, it may be, it may, it, it has certain.
Yeah, this is a transit zone.
I'll, I'll find that and send it to you.
Okay.
But, yeah, I've seen that.
Yes, Javier.
That's a good point.
I just noted that, uh, one of the letters that was submitted, uh, doesn't have a name.
It does on the second page.
Oh.
And back.
Forgive me.
The city now prints on both sides.
Yeah, I see that.
All right. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Second.
We have a motion, second by Julio, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
I was, I was waiting for your.
I wanted to.